All right, we're going to have a word of prayer. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather in this council meeting this evening, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. We pray that our minds might be open as we listen to presentations and as we discuss issues and concerns. Bless us with Thy Spirit to be able to make the decisions that will be best for our community. We're grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Well, we're going to call a meeting to order. Today's the 13th day of March, and we have a regular council meeting. We'd like to welcome Corey Macassay for Channel 32, Will Creed for Temple Star, our delegation, Tony Walker from Community Futures, and our Carstens representative, Dave Edmonds. Thank you so much for coming. So, without further delay, Tony, if you want to come, and, uh, partners?
I have the presentation up top, but I also brought our company's ready buddy. Thank you. It's a nice long group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for all of you who are on council, you probably noticed there is an office of Community Futures right at the bottom of the hill here.
Oh, yes, our temporary office, yes.
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so, as she said, my name is Tony Walker. I'm the general manager for Community Futures Alberta Southwest. We've been on operation for 26 years. We're in our 26th year. All the previous 25 years, we were located in Pincher Creek, Alberta. We last year bought our building in Fort McLeod and have now moved to Fort McLeod. Uh, it is a little more central in our territory, and we've got a beautiful office that we've fully renovated and operating the operations out of there. So today, I just wanted to tell you a bit about Community Futures, make sure that you all know who we are, what we do.
Not going quiet, are you? Call for Shannon.
Let's see here. Shoot it over, uh, over there. Shoot it at Shannon. And just scroll it down. You're pushing it in, just pull it down.
Ah.
Oh, so you're just starting it over there? No, you tell me when you want it. Yeah, you go.
So we have been a federally funded program since 1992. Uh, we were formerly known as Southwest Alberta Business Development Institute, so going back that 25 years, we were SWOPI. And then in 2007, we changed our name to Community Futures Alberta Southwest. Back in, when we first started, the government gave us a million dollars to lend out to small businesses, and they gave us about a $250,000 budget back then. It hasn't grown a lot, but they did give us another $600,000 around the year, $2,000 to lend out. So we have about 1.6 million of government money that they've granted us. Some of that would be repayable if they ever cancel the program, but the original million and what we've grown it to, all that earned interest, does belong to the corporation. So we're looking at 4.1 million dollars is what we currently have for assets. One and a half million of that is currently outstanding in loans to small businesses in the communities, and I have another $2.3 million ready to loan. We are a nonprofit organization guided by a volunteer board of directors, staffed with business professionals. We have three staff, and we are actively engaged in developing and implementing community economic development strategies in the southwest here of Alberta. Our current marketing, uh, we're just undertaking a new marketing campaign, and the slogan's going to be "Make a Profit, Make a Difference." So you might see that slogan pop up from time to time, especially online. There's a big online camp, uh, marketing campaign. We are a business development center that makes loans generally up to $150,000 to individuals that are interested in starting, expanding, or purchasing a business.
Wasn't just you, Tony?
We are also--
Shannon, can you change that?
--an entrepreneurial development center, and we provide business training, counseling, coaching to individuals interested again in starting, expanding, or purchasing a business. Our current board, we're short a few board members right now. Uh, our board is made up of representatives from throughout the region, and from the Carstens County, we have Lloyd Curl. He is currently our board chair. Representing the town of Fort McLeod, we have Bill Hart, ex-mayor, ex-counselor. He's our vice chair. From the town of Carstens, uh, the representative is Dave Edmonds, my board member here that I brought today. Uh, town of Clarestown, Mike McElhernan, a former counselor in Clarestown. And for the MD of Pincher Creek, we have Bev Garben. So right now, I have vacancies in the town of Pincher Creek. We just lost our board member from there. Uh, he changed jobs and due to conflict of interest, they've asked him to resign from the board. And we've had a vacancy from the MD of Willow Creek for a couple of years now. Uh, the, the government instituted a rule two years ago that the board members could serve more than nine years. So in 2016, I lost four board members because a lot of them were longtime board members. Mixed emotions, uh, having a longtime board is comfortable, but it's also sometimes not provoking enough, so, uh, the mix is good. Uh, our services include individualized one-on-one business counseling. We do business planning. That's probably the majority of what we help people do. We help with ongoing coaching and mentoring so we can keep people up with other like businesses, especially startup businesses or young entrepreneurs. We do have a resource library, but that's kind of going by the wayside these days with all the online information. You can find a lot of information online at home in your pajamas, so you don't really need to come to our library. And we also get involved with economic development in, in almost any form that we can, whether that's business economic development or business development or community economic development. We don't have a huge budget for economic development. Most of our efforts do go towards business development, but we can be involved in, in economic development from time to time. Our partners, as I mentioned, we are funded by Western Economic Development Canada. Um, I forgot to mention earlier that, uh, we do get a budget from them each year just shy of $300,000, and that pays for the staff, the office, the travel, and the board and some training. They also come up with programs from time to time that we can help access. WIN is a current program, Western Innovation, um, and that, that seems to be a big buzzword with the government. This year's focuses are going to be, as the budget mentioned, um, female entrepreneurs, youth entrepreneurs, Aboriginal entrepreneurs, and cluster development is the government's strategy right now. We also partner with chambers of commerce. I sit on all of the local chambers in my area. We help with economic development officers or committees. Uh, I've often sat on economic development committees, and I currently do on some. We partner with towns, county, MD councils, like yourselves, for programming. Uh, I'll mention one a little bit later, the Business Improvement Loans, and a few years back, we did a business visitation program. All of those things are in partnership with, with, um, local municipalities. And we partner with the two regional economic development alliances in our area, one being Southgrove and the other being Alberta Southwest. I did throw a little graph in there, the history of our lending. Uh, this is not since inception because some of the records prior to '95 were not available, but those first couple of years, we probably didn't do a lot of lending. From '95 to 2018, we've lent that money out to the tune of over 13 million dollars. Uh, like I said, currently, we have the four and a half, started with 1.6, so the turnaround, turnaround with that money is over 13 million. And from here, you can see which communities have benefited the most because we were located in the town of Pincher Creek. I think that's why Pincher Creek has 41% of the, of the loan efforts over those years. And the other towns, Carstens, Clarestown, Fort McLeod hovering around 10 to 15, and then the, the counties and MDs a little bit weaker, except for the MD of Pincher. But if you think about it, Kali and Lumrick are pretty, uh, a lot of businesses in Kali and Lumrick. We've helped a lot of those businesses. So our current programs, as I mentioned earlier, we are embarking on a new marketing campaign. Uh, we've put in some money on a provincial level. We don't report to a provincial office. We're all independent board-run nonprofits, but we do have an Alberta association, and they sometimes gather up our funds, and we try to do group-type things, and one of them is the new marketing campaign. Couple of years ago, we embarked on a website where we developed the Invest Southwest Alberta website, and that's got profiles of all of our communities on there. We use it as a, um, a site selector site, so if anybody's looking to move to the region, they can click on there and find out a lot of information about our, our region. We also have the Alberta Youth Entrepreneurship Camp. That's something that the council has supported in the past, and, and we are, uh, we always send at least four campers to Cypress Hills, the Eagle's Nest Ranch, and we put them through a week of entrepreneur camp. So they come up with business ideas, they make products, uh, they borrow money from the bank, from a banker. They have product day or sale day on the Saturday when the parents all come to pick them up, they pay back the loan, and they divvy up the profits. In addition to being an entrepreneur and business camp, there's also all the other fun stuff. Uh, there's archery, there's zip lining, skateboard parks, uh, rock wall, rock climbing, uh, all the, the other fun camp stuffs. So we, we packed a lot of activities into that one week. We also are partners in the Shunap Entrepreneur Challenge, a business plan competition. This year has been the most successful ever with the most entries. About 140 business plans are currently finishing up, get ready to be submitted for March 28th, and from there, there will be three, three finalists on the regular business side. Prizes up to $50,000 worth of cash and in-kind prizes, and then there's a technology stream mostly applied for through university and college students, um, and that's another stream there. This is also the most, or the, uh, yeah, the largest submission from our region. So normally, we get anywhere from four to eight business plans submitted into the competition. This year, we have 16. So it's quite a growth, and I attribute all of that to their social marketing and the way they've promoted the Shunap Entrepreneur Challenge. It's just getting bigger and bigger every year. And we currently have some programs for entrepreneurs with disabilities. Uh, those are disabilities self-identified, uh, ranging from physical to mental to, uh, anybody who identifies as having a disability that would disrupt their, their daily activities to maybe impede on, on them operating a business. In addition to the loans, we can also get some grant money and some extra training and things like that to help them overcome any barriers that they might have to get into business. One of the programs that we have, and Carstens has been a supporter of, is the Business Improvement Loans. So those are interest-free loans to, to the local business owners up to $10,000. The interest is paid by the local municipality at prime plus three, currently around 6%. Uh, you have currently signed the letter of understanding, and when we have those types of loans, we clear them with the, uh, with the municipal office. Interest is calculated upfront and either paid at the time of approval, or in some cases, we've actually spread the interest over a few years, whatever works for your budget. And the municipality can also help decide what the loan is to be used for, whether that's tax accessible items or not. Some of the improvements that we've done around our signage, um, office windows, some, you know, carpeting, maybe computer systems, things like that. Uh, so we currently have two websites. Uh, the southwest. Alberta CF.com is undergoing the reskin right now. It's, it's not a totally new website. It's just gonna have a, a different feel and look to, to parallel the marketing campaign. And then there's also the website that we started a couple of years back with the federal money, and that, that contains all the community profiles, Invest Southwest Alberta. So we, we've been managing that for a couple of years, and we just turned it over to the Rita. So, um, Alberta Southwest is getting a new website, and Bob is now going to look after the, the Invest Southwest portion with any responses or inquiries that come through on that website and keep it up to date.
So can I ask you just a question regarding those profiles? Alberta, uh, Southgrove is, has those profiles?
No.
And Southwest, is that different?
Yeah, um, this program was done before the Southgrove one, and--
Okay.
--it, it didn't include Southgrove. This was a partnership that was just Alberta Southwest, so it did include Prozeness Pass and Nantum and Myhole Territory.
All right, so Southgrove had done that, oh.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess the, the, uh, Alberta Southwest is now partnering with Townfolio to make sure that all of the information on the profiles is always current and up to date. Uh, so that was, that'll be a nice addition to the website.
That was a second, I'll repeat.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So, um, our services then, uh, many financial institutions and businesses refer entrepreneurs directly to us. We can now lend money to businesses that are turned down by traditional lenders. Um, because we start with the planning process, everybody has to have a plan, or we can't even discuss their idea with them. Sometimes we help them, uh, develop their plan, and they submit it to other people for financing, and that's fine by us. We're here to help businesses, whether it's our, our money or not. A lot of times, though, we do the business planning to present to my board to, to propose loans, and, like I say, we've done, we do about 10, 10 to 14 a year, and usually around a million dollars a year. I've got more money to lend out. It's just the activity in the, in our region is just very generally stable and steady. Uh, we can work creatively with financial institutions on joint financing, so sometimes the bank might want somebody to come up with their equity or have another partner in the game. We can often do that and take second position on security. We offer the counseling, coaching, and workshops. That's what differentiates us from the banks. Uh, once, once you do the loan with the traditional lenders, um, they just expect their, their payments as they should. We will help people and review their financials on a monthly basis and, and let them know if there's things out there that they could be doing to help their business. So basically, we believe in small business. That is my presentation.
Thank you very much. Councillors, do you have questions? Councillor Self?
I have a--
Councillor Self, no.
So, Tony, do you come to them or do they come to you in Fort McLeod if they want to talk to you?
No, that's, yeah, we kind of started, um, we have a temporary office here in Carstens twice a month, first and third Thursdays, at the optometrist's office right downtown there. Um, and if, if it's any other day of the week, we can come to them. We can put their business location, their home, or they can come to Fort McLeod. We're, we're very flexible.
Councillor Johnson?
So, you were saying you have the, the Business Improvement Loans, but are, what are the other loans? What's the maximum on your other loans?
125, so--
150.
Up to 25?
Up to 150.
Off to 150.
Yeah, and, and the way the word, the WD contract is worded is generally up to 150, or generally is not really a legal term. So that, that can actually, that, we've done some loans over 200,000.
Okay.
It just, whatever makes sense in the proposal.
Yeah.
Councillor Medley?
Tony, are you bridge financing or do you do the total loans?
We do total loans, yeah.
Do you world supply bridge financing?
We can, yeah, depending on what the proposal contains. We normally do regular term loans, but we also do have lines of credit, so if, if that's what, you know, someone would need to, to bridge and they're renewable.
And your interest is the same on either one?
Uh, the interest can be as low as prime plus three, but generally, uh, even up to prime plus five, depending on the security.
Thank you very much, Tony.
You're welcome.
We, and thank you, Dave, for coming along. Thank you so much.
Seems like you should be here. Pull up the chair.
He gave it back to her.
You do.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Councillor, just as a matter of business, I missed item three, so we need to, uh, adopt the agenda for the day.
I could add just a very short thing on other business. See, the cenotaph?
Okay.
Takes me about 30, takes me about 30 seconds, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I think we have good news for us all.
I want, just to bring a report on a meeting that Brad and I had on Pelican Cats.
Okay, do you want to put it under--
Wherever you want it.
7D?
706.
Under 7D?
7D.
Yes, not a bylaw, it's not a policy. Okay, so it's meeting?
Yeah, Brad and I, for our task force that we've got on Pelican Cats.
Task force, okay. All right, so we have two additions. Jeff, just wanted to know, that report from Southgrove, is it now down rolling?
I don't have it on this one, no.
Okay, all right.
I was gonna put it in Committee Reports next month.
Okay, fine, thanks. All right, so we have two items of business to adopt along with the rest of the agenda. So I need a motion. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, we have minutes of the February 13 council meeting. We need to adopt the minute, the minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? If not, we need a, we need to adopt those minutes.
This should be on February 27.
February 27, minutes? You said today's minute.
This was the last council meeting before CCW.
February 27.
It's incorrect, it's 27. Okay, all right, so there was a correction on the agenda, sorry about that. Okay, somebody put their motion?
Put that motion, yeah.
Okay. Any questions, corrections? All in favor? Thank you very much. Let's go on to six, bylaw and policy. Bylaw 1610, so 1610A, business license bylaw. There is a request for a fee waiver. Uh, it is a self-employed person who is not sure that she will have the full business as usual. I want a waiver. To tell you the truth, I don't really see $25 being an issue. Yeah, that's what my feeling.
We all put in five bucks, we can pay ourselves.
Exactly, so I'm, I'm thinking honestly--
I know she's, she's pretty tight for money, I know the lady.
But essentially, uh, when you have three students attending within a month, you have definitely the ability to pay $25, but we cannot be for you too. But, uh, to a waiver, to me, is opening the door to future requests that are not reasonable. We have to be careful. So--
And so if we accept the letter and issue a waiver for the, or request for the fees?
Do you want a waiver for the fee? You want the town to put a waiver? I couldn't agree with that.
I have a thought.
Is that your motion or a council cell? Point of order, if you're making a motion, you, you gotta ask for--
You know, right now, let's have discussion on this one. There's a motion on the table.
So, as I, as I read this, I mean, I don't know if you know this, this person. I do.
But I really don't think we need to look at it with who we know, who we don't know. I, I think we have to look in general. We have a policy regarding business licenses. You do business, you pay your fee. You don't do business, you don't pay fee.
So are you saying there's no exceptions to any rule? Is that what you're telling us?
And that one, if you're in business, you're in business to have expenses, and paying a business license is part of the expense of doing business.
I'm confused now. Three minutes ago, you were saying that this person looks like they're in need of some mercy, and now we're saying that the rule is a rule. If that's the case, I'll pay it myself.
Well, that's what I was trying to say. That's what you said. The town tax dollar shouldn't have to pay for that, that you want to pay it yourself, that is a good choice, but you can't put that in a motion like that.
How are the town tax dollars, or just not collecting a fee?
So I was wondering too.
So no one else's? Whatever.
Well, to give you an idea, there was somebody in a community that had really requested the town to pay for a fairly large item, it was $250. But the policy didn't really fit that. Mercy was needed, but the policy didn't fit. So if you feel that's something you can't help somebody with, you do it. And so I did it, but not with a tax dollar.
Well, I, I, I'm feeling the same way. I, I don't see taxes involved here. I just see money that's not being paid.
My concern is we're opening the door. That we're gonna see a lot of people seeing this and say, well, maybe I can get onto that. I'd rather give them five, I'd rather, like you said, well, let's give five dollars each and pay it for her rather than--
Exactly.
How much is that, Joe?
I think, I think, let's do it privately. Let's do it privately. Let's not--
I prefer to do it that way than to go against the action by law that we have, because again, I can see us opening the door to other people taking advantage of that. Maybe she needs the help, that's fine, I'll do my own.
All right, let's put this in the bed. I'm gonna draw the motion, and we'll all dig deeper.
Exactly, that's the way to do it. Okay, all right, so--
We move on now. I'm happy with that.
Uh, Councillor, if you want to move on is quite fine. Jeff, do you require a motion not to waive?
If there's no waiver, we don't really need a motion.
Okay, exactly, because there's no--
Yeah, the bylaw would say that.
Okay.
Before we, before we move on, I just want to get something clear in my mind. We, in the past, have deferred payment for people to help them. Isn't this a situation we could defer and, in time, she could come and pay it?
With deferred taxes, when people have a plan, in that case, we're suffering from the problem. Yeah.
Well, that's all I'm thinking too. I mean, I, I don't mind helping her out, you know, helping out of my wallet. I have no problem with that, but--
None of us have a problem with that.
No, and I just know that we have deferred too, and if, when her health increases and she gets more students, this could help her, and she'd be able to pay it in time.
Well--
I don't know, that's all I'm thinking. But it's whatever council wants, I'm just throwing out an idea.
All right, so let, let's make sure that we are opinionated. Councillor Pro.
I'm just happy you give everybody five bucks if they can, or $10, it doesn't matter to me.
I agree.
Agree.
Myself.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's put that as you say, Councillor Self. Okay, uh, six, eight, two, enforcement councillor. Do you have any desire to talk about this issue?
I could speak to this briefly since I wasn't willing to talk too long. I was in this store, and he, he mentioned the fact that the people across the street in the new drugstore were installing cabinets and was concerned that they didn't have a business license, and it wasn't people in Carstens. So I came down there to talk to Jeff, and he gave me the bylaw, underlying, could have been maybe a questionable, we weren't quite sure on. I took it back to Don, we discussed it. My question was, I think, where he thinks it's a little bit not clear, or maybe it's not, is that if you buy something in Lethbridge and contract with that company, that they contract with somebody to put those cabinets in, is that, do they require a business license? Because it's, all this dealing is taking place in Lethbridge, it's all part and parcel of installing particular cabinets, and that was the only issue that I could think that we, we weren't sure on, so.
Okay, so as you could see in your packet, there is an amendment to the existing licensing bylaw that would not exempt people from having a business license if they are from out of town doing business in town, even if the person in town as well, out of town. It's in red, it's all white in red. Does somebody want to read that, that line, so we understand it?
Unless the same company also installs or constructs said item within the municipal boundaries of the town of Carstens.
Okay. So, Councillor Pro, does it satisfy the requirement or not?
I'm not sure.
Okay, but why not?
Well, where I'm reading this is so if, say, whoever it is, Home Depot, for example, whoever it is, sells a product that needs to be installed in Carstens, Home Depot contracts and gives a person in Lethbridge, say, the value of it's $10,000, $5,000, and Home Depot says, we'll have our guys install for $1,500 or less, they'll come out and do it. Does that fit in here? Does that come as getting the--
I would say that a person who is installer under the Home Depot brand or whatever has to pay--
So what's gonna happen then? Is they're gonna tack that $300 on whoever's getting that service done?
It's quite possible.
Guaranteed.
So, not the Jeff?
Just want to mention, that's--
That's a broad base.
When we had the hail--
When we had the hail in 2011, that's how the bylaw was, let's say, enforced. Is that if it was a, an out-of-town company who was a contractor, if they came to install here, then we had them get a business license. But yeah, if someone's delivering something, Brad's delivering furniture, no business license required. You order something on Amazon, obviously no business license required. So we drew the line, Brad just wasn't here then and he, you know, we had that talk and he said, you know, I looked at it quick, I felt it was ambiguous, I didn't act. So if we drew a line in the sand, that by the, when you're doing labor here on behalf of that transaction, then you require one? Which is, I think, how it was intended, because that's how we applied it during the hail. Because we have all kinds of out-of-town companies contracted by insurance companies to come do work here. So I, I think that's how it was intended, but it is, it was a little ambiguous.
My concern is they're gonna tack that on to the person requiring that service.
Well, essentially, once those companies know that that is a case, the person who orders that those goods would know.
Okay, so if installation, if somebody from town, you know, says they're gonna install for certain and they go and work a deal with Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever and say, well, we'll do it for $1,500, they'd better be paying that license fee. Because I don't think that's fair. I don't think a license fee is a problem. If they're gonna come in here to do that work, they're using that advantage of a big box store against the little guy here. And I don't think that $300 is unreasonable, or whatever that fee happens to be. I think it should be paid. And like Jeff said, I mean, when we had the hail damage, every person that came in to do the work, had to pay. They had to pay. The guys that did my roof had licenses, all of them. So I think they should have paid. That's my personal concern.
It comes to me, when I was in real estate years ago, and my broker had to buy a license, and I had to buy a license from my local office. Is that the way it is right now?
All right, so any other input?
Again, my only concern is, I know Dawn was looking across the street and said there'd be about five people that could do that job in town here. But I know, I'm looking at a person that's maybe, I don't know, they're gonna tack that $300 on to the cost of whatever that person's buying. And that's my only concern.
Certainly will. I don't see a problem with that. If they're getting a heck of a deal from the other guy anyways, they're still not losing. They're saving money regardless.
No, I understand your perspective. But I also understand the perspective of supporting the business, the local business too, right? Or at least giving them a fair competitive plane. And that's maybe where it is. Counselor, Ben, please.
Mayor, a business license is a tax deduction for that business is its cost of doing business.
Yeah, but it's not so much for the business as it's usual. It's for the person that buys, right?
Well, and I think that Dawn is saying, if I have to pay.
He has to, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a competitive advantage, exactly.
And I think, I think we always embrace fairness on council, and I think we have to really make sure it is fair. Counselor, so in your opinion on this one?
Can I ask one more question?
Fair enough.
So if they buy it from Home Depot and Home Depot sends their people out, it's not a subcontractor, so it would sing unless the same company also installs. So if that home, if somebody buys from Home Depot and Home Depot installs it, do they have to buy a business license?
I see the not.
I think so, that would be my interpretation, okay.
So in other words, what we need to do is advise those larger company of a policy.
So when we have the, what do you call, market in the summertime? All those vendors, yeah, all those vendors down there are buying a business license?
There's a provision where they, the market buys a license. And then they can sell boots and recover that cost and it spreads that cost up from markets. That's how it's worked in the past.
Doesn't make sense, good question.
Counselor, so.
So just the question. So in addition to all the other things that we want Brad to do, we want to direct around and make sure that there's any, there's any companies that are in town that have their truck parked and he knocks on the door to make sure they have a business license?
In fact, that's what happened when all the roofs were done in town and that was busy.
With the hail, we had this really, let's call it an acute time when everybody was in town, right? So you had Lloyd at the time, yes, he drove around, hey, I'm so-and-so, here's our application, here's what you gotta do. We kinda went out knowing that every other house had somebody there. In this case, yes, if there's something obvious, he should probably stop. On the other hand, complaint-based policing as well would be how this would be applied.
I really don't think you would have time for us to do wrong every street in town. I don't think.
I talked to him about this, I said, so you're just gonna chase, trace every cube van in town and see if they're actually working here, Dawn? But I think it's always been the intent of the bylaw, it just wasn't interpreted well in this case. That if you're doing work in the town, it was required.
So Jeff, the same thing goes for the craft show that you have here. They buy, the person that's running the craft show would buy a business license and then.
Lincoln license. Yeah, I think so, that one I'm not 100%. I just know that's how farmers market or the summer market takes care of it, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. I can remember I had a house for sale, property for sale up in Waterton. I had my sign up there for about a month and a half and then I got a letter from Waterton Community suggesting that I should buy a license or take my sign down. I bought the license, I didn't complain. Bought the license, paid the hundred bucks.
But I understand the dilemma. Here's a particular who is going to find himself, but in that case is a business. Find himself with an increase in their purchase price. It's a cost of doing business, unfortunately, that's the way it goes in town.
So on this one, as you saw in your background, or when we got talking about this in the office, there was a couple other small pieces of that license, we wanted to look at some amendments. I haven't prepared them for this meeting, but what I put in the background or if council chooses is to direct administration to amend the bylaw and bring it back for a reading. We have a couple little pieces around, oh, we're looking at taxis and one other thing, we just needed some small amendments that we've run into, but we're waiting for maybe a chance to open the bylaw and do them all at once.
Yeah, makes sense.
If you want that open, motion would be appreciated.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we direct administration to.
Regraft?
Yeah, regraft our bylaw 16.
1610A.
1610A, business license, and bring them back to council.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right. 6B, policy D252, donation policy. We have a request for a fee waiver and I will ask Counselor Brown to speak to it.
So the Ag Society is having a hockey game in order to, so when I started with them, I took to them, the request of council was you need multi streams of income. You need to be looking for other places to be coming up with ways to make money for your ideas. And so they have done that, they're really trying to do that very thing. And so they came up with, Mark Hegi came up with the idea of having a hockey tournament in order to make money for the Heritage Days rodeo that they have every year. Now, the town normally gives money towards that and that's great, but they, they were looking at having some money for themselves. And so he's come up with this, and so the request was put out. He asked me at our last meeting, a couple weeks ago, if it would be okay to take to council and ask if they would be willing to give ice time. So the time, the rental of the arena for this tournament. Now, it's my understanding, it is the final day of the ice arena even being open. So nothing even needs to be kept on as far as the cooling and everything from the afternoon on, is what Jeff, I think I said, Mark Hegi, I meant Jeff Hegi, sorry. Is what Jeff Hegi explained to me. So that is their, that is their request. Their request is they're trying, and somebody brought up, are they going to the county? Yes, they actually are. They, we have recently found out that the county has $50,000 to hand out to anything rec, and that was by Counselor Lacy, Fred Lacy. And so I have informed them to run. So anyway, so they are looking at other, we're not the only place that they're asking, but that's essentially the request.
All right, so your recommendation is that we approve?
I do, I feel like they are doing their best to, to look for other areas and cut here and do that, and that's what we asked them to do. And I feel like this is minimal. We're not, we're not having to cancel anything previously in there. That's my thought.
Okay, Counselor Paul?
What do we donate to the Agro Home every year? Do we pay their insurance or do they pay their insurance?
We pay the insurance and it's around, don't hold me to this exactly, I wanna say around 11 grand.
That's right.
And how much for the rodeo?
14.5. Now that's for all the events of that weekend. Yeah, it's for the mud bog, the ranch rodeo, the Chinook rodeo, if that's what it's called.
We give the Agro Home about $25,000 a year then?
Yeah, in those two items, yeah.
Just those two items?
Yeah.
But there's other events that we do?
We may have some little stuff, we, again, we may go parade the road.
Or get far into the snow.
We might do a few little things.
Who does, who does the general maintenance or the?
They have a manager. Yeah, they have a manager. We oversaw the renovations after the hail because it was under our insurance. So we took care of that, but no, we don't do much of it.
You don't go and fix stuff there, they handle it.
Okay, so here's a recommendation, Eric, counsel, I need to know if you are willing to. Go along with it or not, or is that a $25 story?
Can I just ask a question then? They're talking about a $14,500 amount. Is that what they're thinking they're gonna make on this tournament? Or is that a?
That's the amount we currently give them for Heritage Week to do all those events and supplement their events. When I talked to Jeff Hegi, his comment was, we can make the event bigger and better if we can increase the purse, if we can, if we can sweeten the pot frankly, then it can be an event that can grow a little better than it is now. And so that's what the intent is. My guess is, what was it, 510? Four, no, maybe not even that much. I think they're standing, if all these costs are waived, they might make about four grand.
Can, can I maybe say something? There is a component, there's about $600 in labor that we're trying, right?
Yeah, I think I put in there, I just did a quick, two days, Friday till late night and Saturday during the day, there might be about $600 for the labor there.
That is something that I'm a little bit less feeling generous toward giving, but the rest, I could live with it.
Calgary, every year they have an annual charity hockey tournament. Everything is donated, everything. The city of Calgary donates, the workers donate their time and it's a big tournament, they raise over a million dollars for the, for the charity. And they do it every year, I mean, I don't think they're asking a lot here, so I'm in favor of.
But you're talking about the worker giving the labor. Here it's not a matter of.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just saying.
It's a matter of.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Giving the labor, right?
Now, I am on the Ag Board, so I'm a little biased on this for a little bit, but, but what I can say is their goal is to bring up the purse, like Jeff said, because it's a rodeo. And the more money you have to hand out, the more people you have coming. The more people you have coming, the more people that are gonna come to visit. The more people that are coming to watch, the more people that are downtown buying things. More people that are coming to Cardston. So I feel like this isn't just us helping the rodeo, which is great, but it's also bringing business to Cardston.
It's a wisdom thing.
It just is, it's when it, and it's during Cardston days. They're doing it, they're, they're working their best to try and to supplement this.
Okay, well, thank you for your passion then.
So by the same token, we should be donating to the golf tournaments and the softball tournaments as well? Because it'll bring more people into town?
Okay, so here is, you can see where we're going, right? So the golf tournament, we always have supported. We gave it, we given what, about $800?
Put a team in, $500, $400.
$500, something like that. So we do, we do support. So here's a different line of support. That is something that we really don't have a definite policy as to those type of donation for those type of event. We just don't have it. And maybe, the one we have tells us it's for the kids who live in town, for people who live in town, the benefit has to come back to the town. That's a hockey tournament that really does that. Maybe it does.
It does, definitely.
If you feel that the definition on the policy, a donation policy is fine, then we should argue about it.
As I, as I look at our policy and the relevant policy or bylaw, it has to go through a resolution of council because it exceeds the $200. Number two is not submitted outside of 30 days prior to the event. And number three is an organization already receives funding from the town. So we've got some things to deal with there.
But that's, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
To be discussed because of.
That's a, that's a policy that we need to look at very seriously.
Counselor, House?
I was a professional, or semi-professional referee for hockey for many years. License, I refereed all over. Tournaments are always, always out there. At Cardston, I used to referee several tournaments here and they raised a lot of money. The hockey players come in and they fill the motels. They, they spent their money in the restaurants, they spent money downtown. The wives, the kids were up and down the streets and it was always a good thing. And they've always supported the local business. They're not gonna just come in and watch the hockey, they're coming overnight if it's a two-day tournament. They're gonna be staying overnight, they're gonna be filling up the motels. It's all benefit to the town.
All right, so is there a problem with the policy the way it's written?
I think probably not, but there's our exceptions to the rule sometimes. Maybe this is an exception, I don't know how we, we do make an exception policy, you know, amendment in there, like, no.
Okay, Jeff, can I just ask you?
Counselor Brown, this is your baby.
Can I ask you from an administrative policy? Because it talks about the fact that a business receiving already benefit from the town should not be receiving further donation. What is your take on this one? Because the goal calls as the same as you. And so therefore, I'm wondering, is it necessary to separate the idea of those donation?
I don't know, I think with this one, like any policy, this falls outside and so it sits on council's table to exercise discretion. I think that's how you deal with them. You're never going to have a policy that hits every condition and it's gonna meet every eventuality. It's not going to happen, I think you have a good policy. And I think we can apply it where we need to, but in this case, we have some exceptions. And so here it is for you, not to try and push it back.
All right, so.
But that's why it's here.
So maybe somebody needs to make a motion and then we'll decide what to do.
And so I'm prepared to make a motion to accept the Agricultural Society request for their donation of the ice.
Okay, any further discussion?
You are from now, Counselor? For the tournament?
For the tournament, for the hockey tournament.
Again, this is maybe a larger item, but I have no problem with them going to the county for donations because 95% of the people that use that building are not county residents. Here we are as a town subsidizing people that don't live in town.
The people that are gonna come into town for this tournament, they're gonna be spending the money in town.
I understand that part. So, motion, let's.
Well, this is why we're talking. Let's not take a vote before we have a sense of where we're going with it.
Well, so are we, the question is then, just in regards to that, so then are we not going to support the Ag Society?
The motion's out, we'll have to vote on that.
The motion's out, we'll have to vote on that.
But you understand what I'm saying. You're saying that is, that is the concern. We already, they are ninety percent, over ninety percent is county residents that use that egg building. I get that, but the request was given to them to try and start funding themselves more. They're trying to do so. So are we stopping our funding of them or are we going to help them?
Councillor South, councillor Brown?
Although we can flip on this because we want to waive fees, but we don't want to waive.
I know.
So I'm, I'm a little bit conflicted about that.
This is under the, the donation policy.
I know, but we're still.
Which is a different.
We're still talking about waiving fees, mayor.
Yes, but it's, it's a donation.
So we don't want to waive twenty-five bucks, but we want to waive four hundred and sixty. So having said that.
Same story.
Having said that, it's not necessarily about the Agri Dome and the use of the Agri Dome in this instance. The money is going to our heritage days. So there is a, there's an economic benefit to the town and it's, it's part of our, it's what we do.
All right, councillor Brown?
Okay, there again, every rodeo that happens in this town, sure, most people are from out of town, but they're spending their money here in town. A lot of them, they use their own units and they camp out there, but there's a lot of them still that are using the motels. They're spending their money here in town. They're buying their groceries here in town. So, you know.
All right, councillor Brown?
I guess I'd feel better about this motion if we were not paying six hundred dollars for our staff to be running this thing. That's coming out of the taxpayers' dollar. Thirty-five hundred people in the town of Kerston aren't going to have a say in that. We're just going to spend their money for our staff to be there for a fundraiser. I could be more happier if it was six hundred and sixty dollars.
We never have explored the possibility that the stamp would be happy to give that time. That is something we have not explored. Well, you know, there's certain amount of exploring that can be done. We never know.
But again, like councillor South said, this is for Kerston Days. Kerston Days, people in Kerston go to the Agri Dome. They go to the mud bog, they go to the rodeo. I've been there and half of Kerston is there.
My family's all gone there.
So we're not talking about just a rodeo where only the rodeo people come and it's only the county. We are speaking of Kerston Days. This is Kerston Days, where Kerston people go to this. Are we willing to donate money to this? I think that's, I, I feel like it should be seen as a donation to the Rotary for a pancake breakfast.
We already donate fifteen thousand dollars to it.
All right, we have a motion on the table, let's vote. All in favor? All right, so let's, against? Fine, thank you. We, carried, we're not always going to agree with it and if you have a position based on, on strong principles, there is no reason why you should vote against.
Mayor, can I ask councillor Brown to make sure that she informs this council what the county is kicking into this? If, if they got a letter, I'd like to, I'd like that.
And really, it doesn't stop administration to try to see if some of the worker wanted give to that, to that rodeo and that might satisfy the, I consider our councillor point. Nothing wrong with that. All right, let's move on. Seven, other business. The letter to Blood Tribe Chief and Councill has been a little bit retooled to not create a wording that might not fit the circumstances.
I didn't get the changes, I never saw it. Checked several times, I never got it.
It's in the email.
It was.
I didn't get it.
Councillor, the one on your computer screen is the new one and again, it was a couple words. It was really minor, we were just reviewing the letter and thought, oh, we should.
So I didn't recognize it.
The first sentence.
It's really good.
We changed really the first sentence, that's what we changed, okay? And a comment is, is a very good letter, so thank you Jeff for your good efforts.
So do you need a motion for us, Mayor, to send that?
Please, yeah. Councillor South? Made a motion, all in favor? Thank you. And for your information, I can tell you that council, chief and council is really having a very difficult time with the health crisis that they are facing. It's really bearing heavily on chief and council right now. Some are touched personally, some are really, and collectively, they are not feeling very good about what's going on. Seven B, Canadian Badlands, there is a review of cost with a comparative with South Row and Southwest. And as you can see, South Row is thirty-five cents per capita, might change, but Southwest is a dollar per capita. And the Badland, we thought were twenty-five cents per capita, but in fact is fifty-five cents per, fifty-three and a half cents exactly per capita, which is surprising to some of them, we thought it was twenty-five cents.
Um, I, I, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I remember them saying that our fee was going to be nine hundred bucks and that was, what we discussed over the table was the nine hundred dollar fee. And that's why we decided the.
Once we received invoice, it didn't look like nine hundred.
No, it certainly doesn't. But that's the figure the fellow's quoted, is what, is that right, Jeff?
It's, it's really a little bit unfortunate. It's a little bit unfortunate and we made a motion, we live with it, we move on, but we could also ask administration to kind of contact them and remind them that we have a YouTube, a YouTube that is private, the fee is twenty-five cents per capita and that we are surprised it changed. Would you like administration to, to contact them?
Is that a motion that needs to happen?
Please.
I make a motion that we get ahold of the Badlands group, the Canadian Badlands group and just question them in regards to our bill. It was, I, our understanding, it was twenty-five cents per.
Capital.
And the capita and the bill we've received is.
Great, I'm double that.
Okay, so, yes.
So if they say, yep, it's fifty-three five, the reason I put it on is I still think we can manage it and it'll be fine. I just didn't know if it changed anybody's opinion dramatically about that's our make or break.
I really don't think that that would change.
Sure, no, that's why it's back here.
It's nine hundred dollars.
I think the, the motion stands, but I really think we need clarification as to, as to the amount that is requested.
I think it's valuable because of the connection to Chautauqua, they cover all of that cost, but I also would like you to just talk to my graph to me and see what they're paying.
Okay, yeah, we can do some comparison.
I, I think we need to understand a little bit since this is the first time we're doing it. All right, so we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Thank you. Councillor Coates, be a bearer of good news.
Yes.
Seven C.
We received a word back from the, the committee that was looking at our grant application and they've approved it. Nineteen thousand and five dollars. I'm not sure it's nineteen thousand, five dollars. But it still has to go through Veterans Affairs Canada for final approval, but I think usually when it gets to this stage, we move from there, so.
Well, we wish you well, congratulations.
Yes, we will be, we'll be forward as soon as we get the official work of the AC.
Who, who worked on it, Alex worked?
Alex and I.
Okay, well, thank Alex for.
I will.
On behalf of council, please. Uh, seven D, the meeting task force, councillor Brown?
Yeah, um, okay, so, um, officer Larson and I went for lunch a week or so ago and we sat down and we visited for about an hour about the situation with cats and, and dogs. And we came to the conclusion that there was some serious lack of direction in, in the bylaw. There's far too many people getting around it. There's, there's a lot of things going on. We've got people feeding federal cats in town, which is totally against the bylaw, but you know, they're thinking that we're being too tough on them, we're not showing enough mercy. The situation is, is that there's nowhere to take them. No one will take them and they're wild. You try to pick one up and you're taking your hands in your own life and the hand, because they're, they're wild, I'm serious. But there are people out there who really feel that they want to take, they want to feed those cats. But the problem is, is that those cats get around other cats that are domesticated and there's fights. I had four cats, four feral cats in my yard a couple of weeks ago and I know the one is pregnant now, I don't know where she is, but they were in my woodshed for some time and squawking and, oh, it was awful. Anyways, these cats, they'll get in and they'll be after everybody else's cats and there's fights all over. Somebody's cats that, you know, they take good care of them, they got them licensed and everything, they're healthy, but when they meet up with these feral cats, they're getting sick and they're having to go to the vets and everything. So anyways, I've asked Brad if he would look at the bylaw or revamp it and bring it to Jeff, so he can bring it to us for council, for our approval and any suggestions that we can put some teeth into this situation. Same with the dogs. I didn't use that as a fun, Paula, it just came out that way. But we've got a lot of dogs on the loose again. And we've got people, I've got this, you know, people are taking their dogs for a walk with their leashes and these loose dogs are attacking them and they're not getting reported. You know, councillor Banga's wife reported on, on the, the town page on Ran Ray that there's a dog that attacked somebody's dog that had it on a leash right downtown. And I went on and I explained, because people started complaining that the town's doing nothing. Well, we are doing something, we're trying to revamp this bylaw to put some, you know, oomph into it. And I, and the thing is, I talked to Brad, I went right to Brad today and I told him about the situation. He says, well, why aren't people reporting it to me? So I put some information back out there to the people, I get phone numbers for here at the office, so that if there's a situation, they can phone the office and the office can get ahold of Brad and he can be there very shortly. Or I, he can, they can go to him directly, I give Brad's phone number and they can contact him. But nothing's going to get done with these dogs downtown if less people are willing to report that there's an incident. And so I put it back in the public's.
Okay, councillor Brown?
So that was my report.
Interestingly enough, on the social media this week, Raymond's howling like crazy. They don't have a cat bylaw at all. People there are very upset with what's going on down there, so I, I told him to read our bylaw, so maybe it's not that good.
This begs another, another situation, I briefly talked to Jeff about it, is the loss of Malcolm. And Jeff informs me that that is a, a rehiring that's going to be done. And I don't wonder if we don't need to do it immediately because Brad is really piled up deep with dogs and cats and he can't get back to his normal business. Our spring is starting to break and I mean, we got sidewalks are snowed in and everything else and I, I think we need to have that position, Jeff. That's just my own opinion.
Okay, so there, there is a point there regarding the need to have more enforcement, but also the need to have more service in order to be able to do so. So is this council directing administration to start to put a rehire for that position?
Really?
Jeff?
You wouldn't normally direct me to hire someone.
Absolutely, absolutely not, because it's not, it's not our duty.
The position needs rehired, I just haven't got there yet, but it's kind of, so we'll get there.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't intend to, to mean that.
That's okay, that's okay. It's kind of waiting.
We, we, we are not going to micromanage you, nor completely, not, not our job.
I would do it.
Jeff, when you look, when you look at hiring, is it to our advantage that we hire a level one or a level two?
We can't, we don't, I don't think we want to spend that money for the duties they're going to have. I don't think that's reasonable.
Because I'm just wondering if they could do a backup with, with Brad?
Brad would love it if we want to spend ninety thousand a year again for someone else to animal control. I, I just don't think we want to go down that road. We did it with Malcolm for a specific reason, it was a cost reason.
What is the cost for the?
Councillor Brown, sorry, somebody was saying, councillor South?
Put your hand, they're crying out loud. Okay, um, Jeff, are we not going somewhere with our vagrancy and one of the pieces of that is the possibility of hiring another level one peace officer?
Yeah, yeah, not, not in my opinion for the animal control piece.
Right, but.
Yeah, yeah, but down the road, if this can go through, yeah, it'd be great.
Okay, councillor Brown?
For sure.
Uh, I'd like the, first, before I ask my question, I want to get a little more information than what you're just saying. Are we talking, having two level two ones?
So under the vagrancy proposal, the federal government, it would include an additional level one peace officer. If it's funded appropriately.
If it's funded, okay, all right.
Councillor Brown?
I think it, I think it's very important that, I think people, dog owners, cats owners, whatever owners you are, you forget sometimes what the bylaws are in the area that you live in. And I think it would be important maybe to throw it up on our town page, our bylaws on our animals.
We have them then, councillor.
But just to bring it up, just to bring it up, just so that these people can realize, because my husband walks to work every single day and every single day, there are people walking their dogs with no leash and he gets chomped at, every single day.
And there is also a much more complex issue, because there's a lot of dogs who don't know the boundaries of the town and who are very transient. And those dogs are problematic today, for example, they were on the middle, the middle of Main Street and stopped traffic. And that becomes a little bit more of an issue, not as a safety issue for.
Okay, I, I want to finish my question.
No, did you just have to wait it then?
I got a bunch again.
Jeff, a question to you. Could we contact BTP, contract lease, and see if they would consider a subcontract to the town? With, with federal funding?
There is something else to do animal control, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, even, even the vagrancy issue.
Well, that's what this process is going to meet out a little bit, see where that will come from.
Right now, you need to be out of meditation with the process.
I just wanted to know what the pay level, pay scale is for the level two that Malcolm was and.
What it was? So Malcolm, I actually don't want to disclose personal salary, but I'll be frank, but I'll give you a range. Malcolm was on our fairly regular scale, it would range between twenty and twenty-six in that area. Brad's obviously considered quite a bit higher than that. Lloyd was higher than that when he left. Malcolm was simply a contract position that wore a town crest on his shirt. That, that's, that's what we did with that position. It was just contract, he didn't even work a full forty. He would work in here and there and kind of had some flexibility in his schedule and it worked fairly well for us because he could attend to the pound on the weekends and do some different things like that. So that, that's what we're looking to.
So are we looking at a contract like that or are we looking at a full-time person?
I'd prefer if I could just contract somebody to take care of the animal control duties, because it's unconventional hours, it's unconventional calls, it's a few things like that. I'd like to be able to duplicate what we have on some of your.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding this? Eight financial reports is for your information. Do you have any questions regarding that report?
One question, Jeff, I noticed that there's been no requisitions out to date. When do we start to?
Oh, what, we pay, you mean? Sorry.
When do we start that?
So remember, this statement's the end of January.
Right.
So we have paid now, I think we've paid quarterly Chinook, we've paid some VMS, yeah, we started because they come out quarterly for March.
So that'll show up in February.
Yeah, and maybe March too, most, a lot of March.
Thank you.
All right. Ten? Ten, questions. Third Avenue West Snow Removal, Counselor Banga, you wanted that to be on the agenda?
I spoke to Jeff about this and what we have is we have some businesses down on the Main Street, Subway Sandridge, the Butler, Dr. Butler's office. And it also affects the subway, the barber, and also the corner optical. And what it is, is the water runoff from the back alley. And if you go down and drive down there, you can see the slope of the back alley, it slopes into a storm sewer. And then there's very low curb, very, very low curb and it can't handle the water, so the water is backing up into the front of the business, creating a liability problem. And it's very much a concern, both for the, for the business owner and also for the town piece. Like I said, there's a liability there. But as I spoke to Jeff and Jeff says, well, where do we want to go with this because we got snows, frozen snow and ice buildup in our manholes and so forth. And then when I went down there and looked at the curb, I'm wondering, Jeff, if we brought our public works in and have a look at, see if we could taper down or cut down that road into the curb so we can get a deeper, deeper curb. And I just don't want to lose that, that seal between the road and the curb. But what they've done is they poured two or three levels of pavement on top of the, on top of the curb and so it's raised up, you know, toward the height of our curb. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the result is unless we run a bobcat down there after we grade it and make sure that that storm sewer is opened up in front of the Chinook I place.
Yeah, so I went down and actually, what day is it, Tuesday, so it was just yesterday? Went and had a visit with Kay down at the barber shop, so we went and walked the sidewalk and skated the sidewalk, be a better term, I should say, had a chat. That, that's been a historic problem for a hundred years. And what, I've asked Brandon to go do shots, do, get the laser level out and do shots to actually see, it's hard to gauge the elevation because you're on slope, it's hard to actually tell what kind of elevation you have. If you watch the roof strain off of Butler's building, it actually just goes right along the building and down the sidewalk. It's not going out over the curb or anything anyway. And we even had an issue the week before, just up here on this, on this sidewalk by the credit union, because it never sees the sun, first of all, ever. And even the lawns were draining off of those residences and just running down the sidewalk all the way down the subway. And so, but that's been, I don't want to excuse the issue, don't get me wrong, it's been an issue from the beginning of the sidewalk and buildings. What I asked Brandon to do is to see if the ramp that goes into the laneway could be extended further east and sloped down there so that it could catch anything coming off those buildings and get it out to the street.
Out into the street or into that storm sewer?
Well, and if we could change the asphalt in the laneway to move it better to the storm sewer. So again, when you stand there and you're on an angle, it's really hard to gauge what you've got for drop and what you've got for elevation. So he's going to go take some shots and devise, if he can, devise something for it.
Jeff, I'm just wondering, when the water freezes and there is ice there, if there was even some sand to allow for a little bit of traction?
On the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Where they drive up, you mean?
I'm just wondering if, because it's a massive pack of ice, really, it carries, it carries from the road to three quarters of the way on the front of those businesses. And I'm thinking, even if you had a little bit of sand to free attraction so your feet don't make you fall, the issue a couple days ago, not so long ago, was on the front of the barber. A person with a hip replacement, just had their hip replacement and he fell right there on that same hip. I'm thinking, that's serious.
When I had the bookstore across the street here, the town provided a big yellow box with a lid that opened and it had sand. And I used to go up there and throw it because it's, like you said, it's been a problem for years. And I think there was two of them along there. And maybe we should put that box with sand back there and then those business owners can have it to put it up there on the sidewalk. I know Counselor Court and I took a drive up the laneway, we came up there the other day to look at it and I mean, you've got the curb here and the ice is here up above, you know, and, and it's going, when it melts, it's going to go over top of the sidewalk. So I think if you put the sandbox back there, it would help.
Essentially, we know that something is being looked at and we have maybe a little bit of a, a way to remedy that if we have sand available for them. Okay, thank you. All right, I think we can go into the correspondence. Council Agricultural Society. And Counselor Brown, it's your baby.
Perfect. So when...
There was a presentation made?
Well, there wasn't actually, we were not given a presentation. We were told, Mark Jensen was told by Give Schaefer just roughly what the Sports Flex and everything, what he was thinking about. So it was never presented to the board. It was hearsay. And so Mark Jensen brought that forward at our Agro Dome meeting, essentially just giving everyone a heads up that Give Schaefer was going to be presenting to Council, which is why we had those people show up, because they thought they would be able to be here. Anyway, so the Ag Board wanted me at the time to put forward to Council, letting them know that they did not support this idea of them losing their building essentially. I told them I had done that, but they felt it important to come up with their own letter.
Fair enough.
That's this letter, they wanted it on record stipulating that...
The Agro Dome Society is now in favor of seeing another usage.
Exactly.
Okay, fair enough.
That's what it is.
Fair enough, thank you. Eleven B, Broadband Strategy Survey, that is an interesting survey and I was saying, I said to Jeff, this survey, it's really meant to be a municipal survey.
And you were talking to me about the MSI funding survey, not this one?
And so this one is also a municipal, a municipality survey that is requested here. So I don't know when the time limit is, but it seems to me was twenty-ninth of March or something.
Nineteen.
Or nineteen, I'm attending too late. Okay, so do we want to have the Ag Dev Committee look at it and work with Jeff possibly to fill that survey?
I can just have Alex fill it out.
Alex could do it for us?
We just met today, so the committee won't be meeting again next month.
All right, okay, all right. So, yes, go ahead.
Get me straight on this, what's the county doing on their part?
Well, this is exactly...
So, so we got this one going, we got the county going, we got Waterton Park that's already established, and then we've got, is South Row involved in this?
South Row and Southwest have always been involved in the broadband, up for you pushing it forward.
So when do we put this thing to bed?
When the minister decides if broadband is going to become a service or not. If it's a service, it becomes a utility, it's paid a certain way. If it stays private, it's a different story. Meanwhile, the federal, they're talking about the notion that broadband should be a service rather than some have it and some don't. So in other words, that should be a utility.
So what's the...
They have not decided yet, they're waiting for municipalities to tell them what would be the preferable model.
Then, then further my question there, if, if the town person goes ahead and goes with AXIA and full, is this government going to agree back and pay back the town for the money we've spent on it?
No, 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 no. We're talking two different beasts here. What we have, once we have fiber, fiber is a commodity that becomes highly desirable.
Right.
That it be, Bell tells whoever or show who wants to acquire it, that's a different story. That will pay a fee to AXIA to be able to have the privilege to use it if AXIA is no longer in the mix. When you have fiber, you're highly desirable, trust me, because the other big company never wanted to spend big money in small towns. So, that's what it is.
Comment, please discuss this, that Southwest is the other nice and they don't know where it's going. And so they said that they're just putting it on the back burner to tell the government to decide which way they're going to go because they've been promoting this for years. They've had Wi-Fi in all the little communities all over and then we've got, now we've got the AXIA, we've got different private companies.
It's because loans are due.
They just said, we're just going to put it off now and see where it goes before, see if there's any legislation for it.
Is that going to ward a contract within, within a year and...
So there's time, just one league goes ahead and continues with their development.
Yeah, it's nothing, it doesn't cost you anything. So, take it for whatever it is, it doesn't cost you. So essentially, Alex could look at it, Jeff, on behalf of the municipality?
About that would have done.
You have it have done, I like it, thank you so much. All right, so there's two more items of business. We are going to take a break and have a little bit of a snack.
I'll go for a motion for recess for fifteen minutes?
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much, the median, for being here.
I guess I'm going to straighten it.
We will do a motion afterwards.